Can you hear me? Steve.
Hi Steve, hi Mike.
Come on, could you hear me Lisa?
Who's that? Mike?
Mike Brennan, yeah, could you hear me?
I can hear you.
Thank you.
Hey it's Gary.
Hello.
Hi Gary.
Hi Lisa, Steve Jeskowicz online.
Hi Steve.
Thank you. How are you?
Hi Steve.
Multiple Steves.
We got two Steves.
Okay it's 5pm, Lisa, do you know how many people have come online?
Steve Shuttleworth just joined, so I have just you, for members, just you, Steve, Gary. It looks like Kate's coming on.
I am here.
Okay Kate's here.
Alright, well that's a quorum then, we have four out of seven, I'll give another minute or see if she'll dial in and we'll go ahead and get started. Who's online besides members right now?
Steve June and Mike Brennan.
Okay, super, alright, I'll give another sixty seconds and we'll go ahead and kick things off. Okay it's 5:01pm, my name is Steven Jeskowicz, I'm the chairman of the permanent municipal building committee for the town of Ledyard. Today is Monday the 4th of May and this is a regular meeting for the committee being conducted remotely, both over the phone and using WebEx. The agenda was posted along with the information for people to be able to dial in for townspeople. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll start with a roll call, please state your name and your position, I'll start with myself, Steve Jeskowicz, Chair.
Pete McIntyre Vice Chair.
Steve Shuttleworth, member.
And Gary Schneider, member.
Steven June.
Alright Steve.
Mike Brennan ONG.
Dan Hudson with ONG.
Okay, I think somebody may have talked over each other, so I want to make sure we got everybody. I've got Pete McIntyre, Steve Shuttleworth, Gary Schneider, Kate Palmer Herb, Steve June, Mike Brennan, of course Lisa and Dan from ONG, is there anyone I missed? Alright, well we have five members of the committee online that gives us a quorum and we'll go ahead and begin the meeting. First of all, we have minutes approval for the meeting of 20 April 2020. Those, you have to again jump over to that on the calendar to find them, but those minutes are there and for our meeting of the 20th of April and I will entertain motions to approve those minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes for April 2020 as written.
Motion is on the floor, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, who was that second from?
Steve Shuttleworth.
Steve Shuttleworth, alright, it's been texted by Steve Shuttleworth, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as written, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Steve Shuttleworth, I. Pete McIntyre, I.
Pete Palmer Herb, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Alright, with that, the I's, the I's have it and the minutes are approved. Alright, moving on, are there any citizens that have dialed in or are participating that we know of, if you'll speak up please? I'll pause for about thirty seconds to give you a chance to chime in, please state your name and your address if you wish to address the committee. Alright, hearing nothing from any citizens, I'm going to go ahead and end the opportunity for citizens to speak. If the citizen happens to come online and has something to say, please go in. The next item I have would be informational items, one thing I will point out and I'm trying to call it up on the screen here. And Lisa, if you're able to do it quicker on your end, because you know you were around this a little better. I'm looking for the Leger Town Council action related to the additional funds for the asbestos project, trying to find that actual correspondent.
I have a letter, I have a letter from Linda Davis and it's an action letter due to April 23rd and it said, "Approve to increase by $65,295 the appropriation from board and reserve account number blah 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 account for the Leger High School asbestos project for a total project cost of the amount of $279,296 for the purposes of completing asbestos abatement project at the Leger High School in accordance with the state consent order."
Great, and this is our last of our consent orders that we have to accomplish, so this is good. Alright, so with that, and I'm sorry to not have a copy of that handy with me when I first called this up, but we are gonna be able to vote on that when we get down to our asbestos item later, but I wanted to cover it as a as an informational item because it came external from the committee. Alright, so with that, we're gonna move on to the Leger Schools improvement projects. So before we look at any change orders, I'd like to get a report, we'll start with Wayne as to what work has been going on in the schools, any problems? Anything you want to note, if you'll start with either school, go ahead Wayne.
I don't think Wayne is here.
Ah, Wayne is not on.
No, Wayne's not on, I haven't heard from him.
Alright, that's interesting, I'll give him a few minutes, we can go ahead and take reports from ONG and from Silver Petricelli in the meantime. I have exchanged some emails with Wayne, so I'm kind of surprised and possibly he just has trouble getting in. So let's go ahead and, Mike, if you and/or Dan would like to start, if you'll start with either school, that's fine.
Sure Steve, alright, so I'll give you an overview of the schools at, let me do both schools, at both schools we finished the RTU filter replacement on both schools and all the RTUs up on the roof, so that's been done. In both schools, Gallup Hill School, the stair replacement is complete. They started over at the LMS, I'm not sure that is complete yet, I haven't had a chance to get down there.
Mike, I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time hearing you.
Okay.
A really hard time, I'm sorry.
Let me try to turn up the volume here, is that any better?
Mine's all the way up.
Any better?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks Mike, Mike, Steve J here, if you would address Steve Jeskowicz, would you just quickly go back to the RTU filter replacement? This would be the last filter replacement that would be prior to that system being turned over to us where it's our responsibility, is that correct?
That is correct, yep.
Okay, and then the second you're referring to the stairs, you're referring to the stair treads?
Stair treads have been completed at Gallup Hill and they moved on to LMS. They, in fact I was down there this week, they really look good, the color looks great, everything looks good and Wayne seems to be pretty pleased with it. They should finish up, they should finish up those stairs, they haven't already by the end of this week at LMS.
Alright.
So that's complete. The doors, the door change order if you will, part and parcel of that whole maglock change at LMS. They were working on the miscellaneous doors that needed hold opens, fixed, adjusted, replaced, that type of thing. They moved over into Gallup Hill as well up on the second floor adjusting the 180 door swing issue if you will. That's ongoing, the fencing has started, it's probably 75% complete as I speak over at Gallup Hill. That's ongoing, the materials for the change orders, the various change orders that we've approved over the last several weeks, those have been ordered. The cable, they will start the cabling for the auto doors hopefully by the end of this week, I know the cable did come in. So we should see that work starting up shortly. As you know Steve, I met with this, one of the S-Tech, the asbestos guy and got some ideas of how to remove that asbestos out of that wall and we guess we talk about that a little bit later. That happened this past, last Tuesday, excuse me. The balancer was there at Gallup Hill, they got the additional information on those rooms, did Silver Petricelli want it? I haven't seen that information transferred to Silver Petricelli yet, so I'm chasing that down. Mechanical contractor's been out a couple times to fix some ups and ends on warranty issues. I did get a reply from the sign manufacturer and I sent that over to Steve, I know Steve is looking at the sign comments or excuse me, the comments from the sign manufacturer, but we still need to weigh in, we still need to get together Steve and I with that item.
Which signs, wait, excuse me, Mike, which signs are we talking about here, is this the exterior monument sign or the interior signs?
The interior signs that have been peeling off so to speak, so.
Roger.
I got that information, Steve June is looking at that now. The exterior sign I believe ended tonight as a potential change order. So all in all, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things happening, you know, change work and cleaning a lot of little items up, so we're pushing up change orders is where we are right now.
Excuse me, just. Is Jerry, did you just come on, Jerry Timinski?
I came on right about when we started the Leger School program.
Okay, thanks Jerry.
Thanks Jerry. Okay. Okay Mike, do you have anything else to add with respect to the, how about the landscaping at the two schools? I did get some comments from some people that things were looking good, that we drive by members, you know, citizens of the town. Are we essentially done now with, has that been punched?
Can you weigh in on that because you've met with him a few times?
Sure can, hi, this is Dan with ONG. The, both sites have established punch lists for the landscape. At Leger Middle School, we completed the punch list work and had that backcheck a little over two weeks ago now. We don't know if there's anything remaining as we haven't heard back from BSC. But again, I think that Leger Middle School, the landscape is now just complete. At Gallup Hill, the work's begun, the punch list is a little longer, I've had some conversations with Gerber. I would say the percentage complete at this point is roughly 30%, so there's still, you know, there's still trees to be replaced and lawns to be developed at Gallup Hill.
I understand all that, to jump back to the Leger Middle School for a moment, were the railings ever installed in the auditorium for the stage?
Yes they were Steve.
And has the work started for the extra lighting up there or has that all stuff just been ordered?
The blue, I call it the blue lighting, the low level lighting, in fact I was talking about that with Wayne today, those are eight weekly which is probably about seven weeks now, six weeks out right now. I'm gonna see if I can't get a, an equal replacement for those if we can't get them sooner than that. So, and the up lighting is a lighting, that's a sub of Ferguson's. That lighting should be coming in, he told me, let me look at my notes here. Should be in the week after next, those were a little bit long lead as well, but that's the theater lighting, so they're both, they're both ordered.
Roger, alright, thanks, thanks Mike, do you have anything else to pass, other than the change orders we're gonna discuss tonight? And what has your experience been about getting trades back into the school right now, is it, with everything that's going on, is that pretty easy?
Getting them into the school is easy, getting them is you know, we've had some problems with guys not wanting to work unfortunately from a variety of reasons. A few of them I know are in fact sick and I've been trying to, I've been trying to nail down a delivery date of, from the TV brackets and that guy's been out sick for two weeks, I sort of teed him off a little bit because he wasn't answering my emails and phone calls last week, but I didn't know he was out sick, so we are getting some of this as well, so affecting everybody a little bit, but nonetheless, we're trying to push forward and get it done.
Okay, understand all, and did we get a resolution on the parking lot light problems in either building?
Ferguson ordered three, Ferguson ordered three other time clocks this week, he's getting, he's coming back out there the end of this week and meeting with me and Wayne to see if we can figure out what the heck is going on.
Okay, is it that we're having failure of the, as they're installed?
I'm not sure because we haven't taken it apart again a third time.
Okay, just, and is it, do we have, were we able to confirm whether it's the same equipment in the two schools or is it different?
I did not look into that Steve, I apologize, I'm assuming it's the same, but you know what they say about assume.
Understand, Steve June, did you know anything on that or add anything?
I do not, but I know it's two different electrical engineers, so it could be separate items, I just, I don't know if you.
Roger, alright, and understand the, if it was working for a while, it sounds like equipment failed or we had a problem with cabling somewhere. Alright, Wayne, have you dialed in by chance?
I haven't seen him.
Okay, no problem, we'll continue on from here, alright, we do have some change orders to talk about tonight and the we've approved quite a few change orders at our last meeting and I know that those things are ongoing. Again, our goal here is in the coming sixty days to be able to get everything closed out that we can as soon as possible and start moving this project to closure. ONG has been trying to get the remaining trade allowances and things closed out, we've got a few, but we're at the point now where, you know, we're not adding anything new to the project. So we've got change orders that we've been waiting to approve, we have them there and we'll go ahead and go through those and discuss those here tonight. Steve June from a, oh, excuse me, for ONG, Dan, do you have anything else to add or Mike?
No I don't Steve.
This is Dan again, I will just add that yes Steve, I have been focused on the trade contractor allowance closeouts. So in addition to the ones that we resolved last week, at our next meeting I'll have the balance of the owner allowances to resolve, to present as well as another half dozen or so trades.
Roger, alright, appreciate, appreciate that, that'll be our second meeting in the month of May. And Lisa, we don't roll, we still have another meeting in May, we don't roll to one meeting a month until June, correct?
Correct.
Alright, good, alright, so with that, let's go ahead and talk about some of the change orders that are on the agenda. First and foremost on the agenda, I was hoping Wayne was online for this one and maybe Mike you and Dan can help me out. Change order 170 is for paved driveway to the storage barn at Gallup Hill School. And I know where that barn went and I know that where we're trying to run the driveway, but when I look at the price for $45,000. I'm a little bit confused here because, you know, we're not driving fire trucks on that little tiny driveway and I don't see a sketch or a picture or anything here to help me understand the materials, but help me to understand where we got this price. And I'll put this in perspective for you, my son's house here in Ledyard, he's got a driveway that's about, I'm gonna say sixty yards long, at least, maybe a hundred yards long to get paved. And his quote is about eight thousand bucks, so I'm a little confused as to how we wound up with a $45,000 quote for this. So, I'm a little confused as to how we wound up with a forty-five thousand dollar quote for this. Anybody help me out?
Steve, if, 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 on, on page three, do you have the proposal with you?
I have, what's scanned and attached to the um, agenda, which is only one page.
Okay, so on page, pages three and four, there's a, there's a, there's a sketch of the, of the layout of the um, of the driveway, if you will. Now, the, the cross section of the driveway is the same cross section that was used on all the other pavement on the project underneath all the drives, so I didn't deviate um, from that cross section at all because, you know, still, the detail in the spec is the only thing I have to go on and the specification is the only thing I have to go on, I mean, residential driveway versus the specification that, you know, we're using on this project, our night and day. Um, there's uh, I'm, I'm just looking at it here, there's uh, inch and a half, two and a half inch, four inches of process, eight inches of granular base, granular fill, excuse me, on a compacted subgrade, so there's a substantial um, base in paving, if you will, other than your, than your normal driveway. Um, that's what I, that's what I based it on and that's what I had Gerber base his price on.
Yeah, I, I, I hear it, Mike, I hear what you're saying and my only question is, um, correct me if I'm wrong here, but this storage, the heaviest thing we're gonna drive across this is probably maybe, maybe a pickup truck every now and then, but for the most part, I think this is gonna be the uh, tractors and stuff, lawn equipment.
I, I don't disagree with that, Steve, but again, I didn't deviate from the spec. I, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at this proposal here, there's, there's a hundred ton of eight inch gra, uh, there's a hundred ton of gravel, eight inch thick, there's fifty ton of processed stone material. Um, so, I mean, he provided the breakdown, um-
How many square feet is this driveway area?
It was twenty, hang on, let me go back into the uh, hang on please, because I remember uh, Wayne gave me the yardage to, to include. Hang on for a quick second because I know that's in my file here. Somewhere, hang on. I know I have an email here someplace, I just gotta put my finger on it. Unable to put my finger on it, Steve.
Well, I guess, I guess my question, and, and Gary, you are Steve Shuttleworth, um, I know you guys uh, have experienced this kind of stuff. Um, if you think about that lot, where we have that over there past the dumpsters, um, am I, am I off base here thinking this is outrageous for what we're trying to do there? Or, because I'm trying to ask myself, is, should we just um, uh, do this separate from uh, from the project here? For some comments from you guys.
I'll have to pass, I'm not, I'm not up, that up on the, on paving, so. Gary, you take it.
Yeah, this, this is Gary, I, one thought is, is if uh, is going the other direction, give them a price that we want it to come in at and, and see what they can do for that. It is overbuilt for what it is, but according with what ONG is saying, that's the only spec they had. Nothing came out of uh, so, Silver Petricelli for a, you know, a, a, a lighter type driveway. So I've seen it done two ways, we can only afford X and tell me what, how, how are you gonna do that? Uh, or, you know, to have the architect or someone decide three inches of asphalt on a three inch base or like, like a typical driveway and that's what we get. So uh, forty-five is too much for what, for what it's gonna be used for, uh, I believe.
It's two hundred and thirty-five square yards.
Two hundred and thirty-five square yards?
That's correct.
Um, hmm. That seems really like a lot of driveway there. Um, well, either way, the uh, I'm looking at the spec and everything for that, which is compacted base so deep and everything like that. Um, what I'd like to do is to, um, and Mike, just let me know here, Gerber is not doing any paving on site right now, they have to bring everything in, right?
That's correct, Steve.
Alright, so we're not up against a timeframe here where Gerber's gonna be on site doing something else and it's a real pain for them to come out separate. What I'd like to do on this is table this, talk to Wayne, um, and see what we can do. Because the problem is, um, Gary, I agree with you, we could give them a price, but part of the, part of the issue remains that we would um, uh, you know, they gotta work to a spec of some kind. So either we get it redesigned, which is gonna cost us a bunch of money, or we look outside the project potentially just to have a um, a, a local paving company that would come in and put that driveway section in. I'd like to get, I was hoping Wayne would be on line to be able to weigh in on this. Um, but I think I wanna do is discuss this item with him separately. Um, if we don't make action on this for two weeks while we talk about this, that should be fine. Um, and uh, we'll go from there, if I just take forty-five thousand dollars for that little bit of driveway, even two hundred and thirty-five square uh, yards, it just seems like a lot to get to that uh, but you know, may, maybe not. Um, but I'm worried about, the cost of that just seems really, really high.
Yeah, if you could visualize, Steve, if you look, if you go, when you do see the sketch, I mean, the, the sketch was laid out, there's essentially a turnaround, so you could back, you know, pull forward, back in. There's a couple different extensions, if you will, it's not simply the driveway, so. Yeah, it comes up to about twenty-one hundred square feet of, of, of uh, this wall, so.
Yeah, it still seems like a lot, a lot of money even for that.
Uh, it's a, it is a deep base.
Roger, I'm gonna, again, it goes back to the spec. Uh, I'll talk to Wayne at this meeting, uh, so I'd like to just table this uh, uh, and, and get some more information.
Okay.
Uh, and I don't think that's gonna affect anything, uh, because like you said, they're not doing any of the work on site. Well, at least not any paving work, let me rephrase that, I know they have equipment out there. Uh, alright, so next item we have is uh, item number four. Uh, alright, so uh, so I'm moving it, we, Lisa, I don't have to actually vote on that table, I just table it, correct?
Correct.
Alright, tabled, alright, item number four is change order number two zero two for ONG Industries, this is for the Gallup Hill School. It is a trade closeout, uh, negative change order in the amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. Um, and this closes out the general trades uh, toilet allowance closeout. Um, for people that read the minutes, that'll be good for them to read. Um, so we didn't need as many toilets as we thought, that's good. Um, so with that, it's the change order request two zero two, um, dated twenty-sixth April twenty twenty. Again, negative change order in the amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and I move, we accept the change order.
Second, Steve Shuttleworth.
Second by Steve Shuttleworth, uh, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, all in favor of approving the change order signify by saying aye in your name, Steve Justo with aye.
Shuttleworth aye.
I.
Jerry Timisky aye.
Tapama Herb aye.
Gary Schneider aye.
Alright, with that, the ayes have it and that change order is approved. Okay, the next change order, uh, item we have is change order one two four, uh, this is dated twenty-eight uh, April, uh, twenty twenty in the amount of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. This is for the monument sign at the Ledgerd Middle School, the, the base is already in, uh, there. Uh, this is to actually put the uh, sign on top of that. Uh, there's some pictures there, it was designed a while back, it's actually a granite, um, uh, a granite sign. And uh, you'll see the picture there and how that all looks. Uh, it says Ledgerd Middle School eighteen sixty root twelve, uh, in granite. And it goes on a uh, a brick base that matches the building. So uh, I've, we've been beating this one around for a long time, we finally have it actually in front of us. Uh, and it is in order and I move that we accept the change order.
Second, Steve Shuttleworth.
A second by Mr. Shuttleworth, is there any discussion of this uh, change order? Hearing no discussion of a change order, uh, we'll go ahead and vote, all in favor of the change order signify by saying aye in your name, Steve Justo with aye.
Shuttleworth aye.
I.
Jerry Timisky aye.
Tapama Herb aye.
Gary Schneider aye.
Oh, I think we got everybody there, uh, and with that, the change order is accepted. Alright, the next item, we have a little bit of discussion to do along with it. Um, this is a Best Tech Environmental Services quote, um, in the amount of twenty, it's a quote, uh, twenty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, uh, this is for the Gallup Hill-
Excuse me, Steve?
You missed one.
Uh, Steve, you missed one.
Yeah, hold up.
Number four twenty-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the locker room, my apologies. Going back to item number six, um, uh, we have gone round and round in the last couple of years on the locker rooms, um, temporary things, glass, uh, viewing areas, what you can see, what you can't see. Uh, finally, we kinda have a uh, a, a redesign of those locker rooms to accommodate additional areas for, um, in the case of the girls' room for uh, privacy and for the boys' room to have better visibility for the uh, the gym teacher, uh, to be able to oversee what's going on in there. Right now, there's a lot of uh, areas where he can't see what's going on and it, uh, there could be uh, activity going on in there, but it's not right, so the uh, this opens up those lines of sight for the uh, individual that's in the office, uh, the approved person to be there. And then lastly, uh, in the girls' room, it adds uh, three additional non-ADA changing areas uh, in addition to the existing ADA area. Uh, so, uh, with that, the sketch explains it, it's all attached, um, the locker room basically gets rearranged, we patched some uh, areas to take care of it, this should put this thing to bed finally, we've been carrying some costs for that uh, in our budget. Uh, so this is change order request number four twenty-eight for the Ledgerd Middle School. Uh, it is uh, in the amount of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars, uh, and that is for uh, the locker rooms. And the change order is in order and I move that we accept the change order.
Second, Steve Shuttleworth.
Okay, this change order is been seconded by Steve Shuttleworth, is there any discussion on this? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving the change order, signify by saying your name and aye, Steve Justo with aye.
Shuttleworth aye.
Jerry Timisky aye.
Tapama Herb aye.
Gary Schneider aye.
Alright, with that, change order is accepted. Alright, moving on to Best Tech, I'm gonna ask Mike Brennan to address this a little bit because, Mike, if you would, give us an overview of the communications you've had back and forth with Fussin O'Neal about testing, uh, you know, what, uh, the areas that we have to set up uh, containment here, what's involved in the work? Uh, this is a price from Best Tech to do the work, uh, and this would then turn into a formal change order, uh, am I correct, Mike?
That, that's correct, Steve, so um, after our last meeting, um, again, Fussin O'Neal had directed us to go find a uh, uh, um, because they, they indicated that the, they're not gonna provide a, a, a means and methods of how to uh, extract the vermiculite out of this wall, so. Uh, I got Best Tech who did all the uh, the uh, uh, asbestos removal at LMS to meet, meet Wayne and I out there, uh, a week ago, uh, our last Tuesday, excuse me. So we, we came up with a couple of different items of how to go about doing this and, and basically, we're, we're gonna open up the wall as, as I suggested in probably six or seven port, ports across the bottom. Uh, they do have to contain it, in other words, set up a containment area, showers, that type of thing. Um, so, it's, unfortunately, that adds to the price of, of doing it, but it is what it is based on state regulations. Um, there was some concern i- if, if, you know, doing this one wall was gonna open up indoors box, so to speak, but checking with uh, Best Tech, they indicated it, it would not. Um, so, um, we haven't uh, formalized this proposal because, you know, I wasn't sure how we were gonna move forward with this item or not, but um, this is the best method that, that the collective can come up with about how to uh, essentially suck, put that, put that cavity wall under negative pressure, dust it out, clean it out, get some, get some things up into there, assure that no uh, vermiculite is left in that wall and then seal the wall back up with the brick that we have on site.
Alright, and in addition to this, just for everybody to understand that uh, we also have a uh, a quote from uh, Professor O'Neal, uh, Professor O'Neal was under contract with both schools for the uh, major construction phase. We have completed all of our payments to Fussin O'Neal and closed out that contract, so there's a small contract that uh, we, we need to forward to the mayor to, uh, to sign uh, so that they can provide us with the environmental testing. Uh, and they're the right people to do this because uh, you know, while Mystic Air does a lot of work here locally, Fussin O'Neal was involved in all of the effort for this and, uh, and these buildings as we went through this process, so they're the right people to do this. Um, so, um, there's two things that are at, at stake here, one is that we need to give ONG the uh, the approval to go ahead and start getting this work set up. Uh, it needs to be scheduled, obviously, we need to, um, you know, we have to know for sure when the kids are gonna be back into the building or not, so that we don't interfere with that in any possible way. Um, it's possible this work would not be done until the end of the school year, depending on whether the kids are gonna go back into the building or not, so we have to balance that. We also have to um, get Fussin O'Neal back into a, an agreement, uh, to be able to provide the services that they do, uh, and we'll be able to move forward with this. Is there anyone in the committee that has any questions about this work for Mike Brennan, uh, related to this uh, vermiculite? But just as a, a data point for everyone, Mike Brennan and I had a few phone calls on this over the last week where you know, one of the questions that was posed is can we just get a sample of the vermiculite, send it off, determine whether or not it is in fact, uh, potent, you know, has any asbestos in it or not? And the answer we got back was, well, since some very, very high percentage of all the vermiculite mined in the United States in the last fifty years all came from one mine that had a problem, uh, the, the assumption is it all is and there's, it, there's no real way to test and say that you don't have any. Um, you know, I think you would have to remove it all, send it off for testing, treat, treat it like it was asbestos the whole way and then afterwards find out you don't have to after you did the work, which wouldn't be of any value, so we have to treat this, as if it's uh, ACM, um, and uh, move forward. So any, if, if there's no questions for, for Mike, what I would like to do is to um, is to go ahead and um, um, authorize ONG to proceed with the change order, um, and we'll get uh, for uh, removal of uh, of vermiculite from that one wall at Gallup Hill School. So we're not, we're not accepting the quote, what we're doing is we're authorizing ONG to move forward with the formal change order. To create the change order for this. Mike, do you need any, uh, the timing to get the change order together and everything? Best Tech is still gonna give you a response to a formal change order or is this what you got?
This is, oh, this is what I have, this is, this is, this proposal's based on our, our, our meeting down at the job. Um, I, I will, I will say this, Steve, um, Best Tech still has to provide the state a ten day notification once I give them the okay to, you know, start this work, so. Um, I could certainly put this, this uh, this quote in a formal proposal, get it onto the committee so that in two weeks, this is ready to go, and we, but in two weeks, um, if, if the committee's satisfied with, with the proposal in front of them, this twenty-three and change, that, that, they will, they will sort of coincide and if the kids do not go back to school uh, for the rest of the remainder of the year, then we could get this thing up and running right away.
Right, obviously, we have to balance that against uh, whether they're gonna come back in, I do not want to start this work if the kids are coming back into school at all, and the reason for that is because the, the problem we had once before with the test, um, where we couldn't get back to the school, I don't even wanna take that chance, um, to be honest with you. Uh, the other piece is I also have to get Fussin O'Neal back under contract. A question, was Best Tech a Gallup Hill School contractor?
They were a Led, a Ledgerd Middle School con, contractor.
Okay, how do you, how do you do this then?
I was gonna write them a purchase order. A separate purchase order contract to the Gallup Hill, un, under, under, under us. I, I did not, the, the, the contractor who performed the uh, Gallup Hill Schools out, an out of state contractor and quite honestly, I, I, I trust Best Tech a whole lot more. Um, so, I, I went with a known entity, so to speak.
Alright, well, the town has a contract with ONG, so- All right, well, the town has a contract with ONG, so ONG has to satisfy this. Now, will the state have any issues with this? Because this is something we're going to file, obviously, for reimbursement because it's asbestos-related.
No, they should not.
They shouldn't, but I'll, you know, I'll chime in if I may, that there, you know, it's not a guarantee. And because there isn't a three-bit process, there could be pushback at, at some point in the audit process.
All right, well, it's only twenty-three thousand.
The only other comment I was going to note is, something else just for the, this is Dan again with ONG, just for the general, making sure everyone understands. The issue over there was also involved water intrusion to the interior. And this quote doesn't include, you know, efforts to try to prevent that from happening. We're, we're hoping that the vermiculite and removing the vermiculite creates an open air path and an open drainage path for the water to get out through the exterior. But there is the potential that there'll be some small cost to try to do some type of, you know, waterproofing and then replacement of the brick afterwards, right, Mike?
Excuse me, the Best Tech is going to put the brick back and provide weeps at the bottom of that once we're complete. So that's the idea. To, this is a one-stop shopping with Best Tech.
And I have to agree with Mike, working with Best Tech is, I mean, they're very reputable and, you know, they're a good contractor to work with. I didn't see the masonry work identified, that's all.
All right, and with Best Tech here, they're going to provide the masonry, everything all under their contract, correct?
That's correct.
All right, based on the discussion we just had, is there any comments from the committee or concerns with this?
Steve Shuttleworth, no.
I think what I want to do here is just go ahead and get a vote on authorization to proceed. We'll still see a formal change order here. I think that based on the relatively low cost of this, the twenty-three thousand dollars, and if we had to go out to bid on this thing, it would take quite a while and I don't necessarily know if, if we gain a whole lot there, other than we'd have to go out and advertise the thing and everything like that, and the end cost may actually cost us more in the end, depending on how the state looks at it. So with that, I'd like to just go ahead and get a vote on authorization for ONG to proceed with preparing the formal document with Best Tech to move forward with this. In parallel, I'd also like to authorization to bring Professor O'Neal back to the mayor. It's a time-materials thing with them to be able to do the environmental monitoring associated with it, which is required by law. So with that, Lisa, do you have enough to be able to record that so I can get a vote?
Yep, I got it.
All right, so with that, all in favor signify by, that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Steve Shuttleworth, if there's any discussion? If none, signify your vote by saying aye. Steve Justwood, aye.
Steve Shuttleworth, aye.
Jerry Tyminski, aye.
Kate DePommaher, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
All right, with that, the ayes have it, and that is approved. All right, moving on now to payment of some invoices here. I've got two invoices here.
Steve.
I'm sorry?
Mike Brennan.
Yeah.
There's one change order that was submitted, and Lisa, I don't know if you have it. It's one fifty-nine for masonry and fills above the allowance at Gallup Hill.
Um, what I have on the agenda is all that I've received.
All right, Mike, can that wait, can that wait two weeks?
Yeah, it's, it's just that we went over the allowance, like, we go under the allowance sometimes, so, yeah. The work is done, Steve, so it's just a memorialization of all the T and R tickets, so that's fine.
What's the, what's the cost, what's the cost on that one since it's a positive allowance?
Twenty-five, seven, twenty-nine. It's, I submitted it to the committee because it's over the twenty thousand dollar range, if you will, of, it needs formal approval by the committee.
Roger. Well, that's on the agenda for our next meeting then. Okay, moving on.
Please mail that to me again, Mike.
Will do, Lisa.
Thank you, thank you.
Next we have here is our AIA application number thirty-one. This is for the Ledyard Middle School. This is actual submission from ONG for payment in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand forty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. This is on the middle school. Keep in mind that as we add these change orders in, the amounts that are on the first page of this AIA application actually change. So what happens is we increase the contract sum a little bit, and then we, what happens is the balance to finish instantaneously goes up as well. This current payment of two fifty-seven zero forty-eight, just let you know, we're still about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in retainage out there in the middle school alone, which is plenty of money for anything that's outstanding. And then the balance to finish does include the money we're not going to spend against the contract sum. So you got to kind of put all that together. So with this, this is in order, application number thirty-one. It's been signed by ONG Industries, notarized and certified by the architect Steve June on behalf of Silver Petricelli. It is in order. If you go through there, you'll see the percent complete is pretty much almost all there. And we are at ninety-eight point nine percent complete for the subcontractors on the project. And you'll see if you go on that the the last of the allowances are being closed out, so we're getting pretty close. So with that, I move that we accept the application number thirty-one to the Ledyard Middle School in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand forty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second, Steve Shuttleworth.
It's been seconded by Mr. Shuttleworth. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving payment, signify by saying aye. Steve Justwood, aye.
Steve Shuttleworth, aye.
Jerry Tyminski, aye.
Kate DePommaher, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Pete Beckentire, aye.
Okay, with that, the ayes have it, and that is approved. Next, we have a similar AIA document. This is also application thirty-one, this time for the Gallup Hill School in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand seven-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and one cents. It has been signed by ONG, certified by the architect. If you dial into this one a little bit, you'll see that we have about two-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars left in retainage after this payment, and that the balance to finish is about one point one million. Again, some of that is money we'll never spend. If you dial into the percent completes on this one, you'll see that Gallup Hill School shows out at ninety-nine point four percent work complete for the subcontractors on this. And the, I was going to say, everything is in order on this one, and I move that we accept the AIA document for payment to the ONG.
Second, Steve Shuttleworth.
Second by Mr. Shuttleworth. Is there a discussion? Hearing nothing on discussion, all in favor of approving the invoice, signify by saying aye. Steve Justwood, aye.
Steve Shuttleworth, aye.
Jerry Tyminski, aye.
Kate DePommaher, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Pete Beckentire, aye.
All right, the ayes have it, and that is approved. For ONG, just a quick question for you guys. The process for closing out the remaining retainage, how long does that take, and do we do that in one big swoop tour at the end, or how do you do that?
We've been reducing them until, as, as, as we continue to whittle down what's left for their work to be completed, Steve, but we'd like to get to a point where, yeah, we'll do it all in one fell swoop, but, you know, we're not quite there yet because there's still work outstanding on some of these subs.
Okay. All right, with that, are there any questions for ONG Industries with respect to anything related to the Ledyard School improvement projects? Or any questions for Silver Petricelli on these projects? All right, with that, we're going to move on to the track and field projects. Mike Brennan, you, Dan, Steve June, thank you for for dialing in. You're welcome to stay on if you like. If not, if you guys have better things to do, feel free to sign off.
Good to see you, everyone.
See you in two weeks. All right, next couple items we have here are Ledyard High School track and field projects. Wayne's not here on some of these.
Yeah, I got it.
Oh, you're here, Wayne? Good.
Yeah, I just came in. I was a little late, sorry.
Hey, Wayne, at the end of the track and field project, in fact, Mike Brennan, you still online by chance?
No, he's gone.
No, he's gone.
All right, we'll go, we're going to go back up and talk about the driveway for the storage shed at the end of the, at the end of the meeting. We'll bring that back up. All right, so Wayne, the first item we have here is, is from Boundaries LLC, which is the civil engineers on the revised water service to basically run water to the concession stand, and they're estimating it'll be seventeen hundred and sixty dollars for that work.
Correct. That was the design work and contacting rotten utilities and, and all that stuff.
All right, so just make sure I got this correct. This would turn into a change order for Castle Booze back against the project, and will be billed that way, correct?
Correct.
All right, so I think Wayne's addressed this before in the committee and let us know that, you know, the original, you know, there was an onsite well, and then we found out that the, how, you know, how we were getting water to the concession stand, and we did recognize the need to have proper water going there. This looks, there's already a water line down the street, so this is basically to do the design to run that extra water there. And Wayne, the actual installation of the water line will be covered under Stone's contract, correct?
Yeah, it'll be under Stone's contract as a change order. You should have that also.
Yep, throw it down.
Yep.
Four thousand dollars, okay. And that's within the, the extra.
Yeah, it's within the extra we have for the electric.
Right, it's a four thousand dollar credit.
Well, there's, there's two. There's actually, you've got four invoices. There's a, I think it, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it was like nineteen, and then off of that is a four thousand dollar credit.
Yeah, it's actually twenty-three.
Okay, then it brings it down to nineteen.
Yeah, and then the four thousand credit.
Right, so on these, going back to the Stone project here, we've got a couple of change orders here, and the total amount that they approved on this project with our total contingency on this, I'm trying to pull that back now in this project. I believe it was a five percent contingency.
Right, and you also have, there is a forty thousand dollar built into Stone's contract for running the electric, which we're going to do with our in-house labor.
Because we have, we have about a hundred thousand dollars of contingency on the project, so we got to kind of monitor that as we start to approve these first change orders. And we're pretty far through the project, so some of the heavy lifting, when you find a buried German U-boat out there or something, I think we're past a lot of that stuff.
Yeah.
But it's just that we have to start monitoring here a little bit more closely. Separate from the payments, we'll make payments, obviously, but the change orders are different. So the first item we have here is just discussion on the boundaries for the revised water. We're going to see that as a formal change order later from, from Stone. It has to be done because we've got to, we've got to run the water there. So I think they're just notifying us. Is that correct, Wayne?
Yeah, pretty much. They're just looking for the approval so they can get, move on to the invoice or a change order.
Okay, we'll actually see that and approve all the change order later, but we'll go ahead and get consensus with the committee and a vote here. So I move that we, that we approve additional design work for Castle Booze through their subcontractor from Boundaries LLC in the, in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars.
Second, Steve Shuttleworth.
Second by Mr. Shuttleworth. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the proposed change, signify by saying aye. Steve Justwood, aye.
Steve Shuttleworth, aye.
Jerry Tyminski, aye.
Kate DePommaher, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Pete Beckentire, aye.
With that, the ayes have it, and that is, that's approved. Item number two under track, item two under track and field is application number four for payment for Stone. This is twenty-seven April twenty-twenty. It is in the amount of two-hundred-and-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars. It's been signed by Stone, certified, and signed by the architect as well. It is, it is in order. They are holding back five percent retainage as we expected in the contract. And to give you an idea here, to date, we're about thirty percent done with the project for billing, just to give you, give you an idea, about thirty percent. So with that, this is in order, and I move that we accept application payment number four for the period ending thirty April. Again, the amount, two-hundred-and-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second, Steve Shuttleworth.
Second by Mr. Shuttleworth. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving the application payment number four to Stone, signify by saying aye. Steve Justwood, aye.
Steve Shuttleworth, aye.
Jerry Tyminski, aye.
Kate DePommaher, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Pete Beckentire, aye.
Okay, with that, the ayes have it, and application number four is approved. Next item, item three on the agenda under track and field is Castle Booze invoice one nine zero one six point zero zero dash six in the amount of two-five hundred dollars dated thirty April during this particular period. This is the construction administration phase of this project. They're billing us for two-five hundred dollars, which makes sense. That's the recurring fee on this. That invoice is in order, and I move that we accept the invoice, make payment of two-five hundred dollars to Castle Booze.
Second, Steve Shuttleworth.
Second by Mr. Shuttleworth. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving the invoice, signify by saying aye. Steve Justwood, aye.
Steve Shuttleworth, aye.
Jerry Tyminski, aye.
Kate DePommaher, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Pete Beckentire, aye.
All right, that's everyone. With that, the application, excuse me, the invoice is approved. All right, number four is change order number one to the track and field project from Stone. It's the amount of twelve thousand fifteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. It adds an additional two-hundred-and-seventy linear feet of electrical conduit and boxes. That invoice, that change order is in order. There is a small amount of deduct going on there in addition to the adds, but in the end, it works out to a total of twelve thousand and fifteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. We're going to see the change order here and the credit in a moment in a separate document. That's going to be one A, and then we also have, this is, well, one A is for the conduit. So with that, it's a twelve thousand fifteen dollars seventy-seven cents additional cost change order for Stone. Number four on your agenda, and I move that we accept change order number one.
Second, Steve Shuttleworth.
Second by Mr. Shuttleworth. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the change order, signify by saying your name and aye. Steve Justwood, aye.
Steve Shuttleworth, aye.
Jerry Tyminski, aye.
Kate DePommaher, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Pete Beckentire, aye.
All right, with that, the ayes have it, and all right, the ayes have it. Moving on, number five, this is change order application one alpha, which is connected to number one here, and that this is the credit for the unused part of the conduit. You'll see that we use a hat, one and a half inch instead of four inch in some places. That change order again is with Stone, and it is a negative change order, the amount of four thousand dollars. And I move that we accept the negative change order of four thousand dollars.
Second, Steve Shuttleworth.
All right, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the four thousand Hearing none, all in favor of approving the four-thousand-dollar credit change order, one alpha for Stone on the high school track and field, signify by saying your name and aye. Steve Jessica, aye.
Steve Shuttleworth, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye.
Kate DePommah, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Pete McIntyre, aye.
Alright, that's approved, and, uh, moving on, next change order is change order number two, uh, for Stone, this is on track field project, this is the amount of twenty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. This is to install that one-inch water line, um, and, uh, you'll, uh, if you read through, there's also elimination of a quick disconnect, uh, and the total amount there is, uh, thirteen-thousand material and equipment, eight-thousand for labor, and you bring it all together with some profit, and it's twenty-three-six-ninety-nine-sixty-four. Uh, and I move that we accept the change order.
Second, Steve Shuttleworth.
Second by Mr. Shuttleworth, is there any discussion? Hearing nothing on the discussion, just keep in mind, we're gonna approve two A here in a minute, which takes four thousand off of this, uh, signify by saying aye. Steve Jessica, aye.
Steve Shuttleworth, aye.
Uh, Jerry Tominski, aye.
Kate DePommah, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Pete McIntyre, aye.
Steve, I have a question on the wells. Wayne, or is the school gonna keep the existing well, is the ag department gonna keep it, or are we gonna abandon the well?
Abandon the wells, um, this basically brings the water up and ties in the concession stand plus the ag science line, uh, along with the football field.
I don't see any cost to abandon the well, is there gonna be some additional costs to do that?
Take care of that, we'll, we'll figure out whatever it is.
Okay.
We'll cap it and, and, you know, disconnect the power to it and whatever we have to do.
'Cause I think in some cases, you have to seal the well and record it.
Well, let me, let me do some research and talk to the health department and stuff and see what they want, and the building department.
You're right, though, uh, Gary, uh, uh, Gary, we have, uh, seen that in, uh, in other projects when we're dealing with the wells that were, um, old wells that were onsite in police station, for example.
Okay.
Yeah, it's very possible, so let me, let me check with the building department and all and see, see exactly what they want.
I think, uh, and help me out here, Lisa, I think we were voting when Jerry, uh, Jerry brought that up, am I correct?
Yes.
Alright, so, uh, Jerry, is your vote yes?
Yes, I, I think we already passed it.
Alright, yeah, I wasn't sure if you had voted yes and then asked the question, or asked the question. Alright, so that's taken care of, moving on to number seven, motion approved the change order two A, this is the credit for the, uh, uh, portion of that copper water line and the quick disconnect, um, or connect, rather. Uh, and it is, uh, change order number two A, a credit in the amount of four-thousand-eleven dollars and fourteen cents, uh, and I move that we accept, uh, change order two A.
Second, Steve Shuttleworth.
Second by Mr. Shuttleworth, is there any discussion? Uh, hearing none, all in favor of accepting change order two A, signify by saying aye. Steve Jessica, aye.
Steve Shuttleworth, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye.
Kate DePommah, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Pete, Pete McIntyre, aye.
I'm waiting on one more, is that it? Okay, uh, all in, uh, that has been approved. Alright, so moving on now to the, uh, high school tunnel asbestos removal project, actually, before we do that, Wayne, did you wanna comment at all on the work that's ongoing, uh, and the schedule with respect to the, uh, track and field?
Yes, um, we met with the, uh, Stone and Eric and everybody, um, last Thursday. Um, we're informed then that apparently Stone, uh, was late in getting their submittals in for the turf, um, so they don't expect the turf to be, um, in and installed prior to the graduation date. So, right now, we don't know what's going on with graduation, but there was, we were thinking about still holding it on the field with modified attendance, um, and proper spacing for the, uh, uh, but that, right now, it doesn't look like that, they're, uh, they've got thirty days of manufacture and thirty days of install, um, and it was just approved by, uh, Castle Booze, their cemental, they got in, uh, late last week and was approved, uh, uh, I think Friday. So that would put us like July first.
Okay, and have you notified the superintendent already that?
Yes, I have.
Okay, um, now, on this one, the, the penalties on this one don't kick in for a while because of going in the contract, number one, and number two, um, with everything that's going on right now with clauses and contracts for, um, you know, acts of God, pandemics and things, um, we'd have a, we'd have a really hard time, um, making that an issue anyway, um, so, uh, the, the superintendent's been informed, I, um, I'm glad you told us that now. Any other, uh, issues onsite?
No, everything's been going really well, um, Stone is good to work with, uh, they, uh, are starting to bring back, uh, they brought a, uh, screening plant in the public works. They're screening the topsoil and starting to bring that back onsite, um, so things are moving along.
Okay. Alright, uh, alright, moving on to high school tunnel, whoop, alright, high, high school tunnel, uh, project, uh, at our, if you recall at our last meeting, uh, we discussed, um, the fact that we needed additional, uh, funds, and that was gonna be approved by the, uh, the town council, and the additional funds were in fact approved, uh, we now have two-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand dollars. Part of that goes to, um, the, uh, monitoring for this, there's advertising, uh, but the, uh, uh, the contract that we have now is, uh, for two-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand dollars with respect to, uh, HPI, and, which is Hazpros, uh, they were the little bidder on this, and, uh, we have a contract with them, uh, ready for, uh, to go to the mayor, they've been notified that they were the low bidder and that the money's now available, so I think they're, they're gearing up. Um, so with that, since the mayor signs all contracts, um, uh, what we need to do is to authorize the mayor to, uh, execute the contract. We don't really authorize it, we, uh, we recommend to the mayor to execute the contract. So with that, uh, I'm, is a copy of that contract that is attached to your, uh, your agenda, and keep in mind that they are responding in accordance with the, uh, the project plan and the conditions that went out with their proposal. So with that, uh, I move that, uh, we, uh, request the mayor enter into a, recommend to the mayor to enter into contract with Hazpros for the high school tunnel asbestos abatement project.
Second, Steve Shuttleworth.
Second by Mr. Shuttleworth, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of, uh, recommending the mayor to enter into agreement with Hazpros, signify by saying your name and aye. Steve Jessica, aye.
Steve Shuttleworth, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye.
Kate DePommah, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Pete McIntyre, aye.
Alright, so that is, uh, goes off to the mayor for signature, and, uh, we'll get that executed, get that work started, uh, obviously also...
Steve, excuse me, I have a question, Steve?
Yeah.
At least I have a question, so who is going to, um, because I know, um, I'm not at work this week, I'm working from home this week, and the mayor's assistant, she's actually working at home, she only pops in for an hour or two here and there, so who is going to forward this contract to the mayor for signature?
I can send it over to him, I'll email it to him.
Okay.
Alright, let me take care of that, uh, just, uh, as a, uh, as a, as a, we're gonna say here, uh, we've got one additional item I wanna go back up to on the, uh,
I have one other item too, Steve.
Alright, is that you, Wayne?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, Wayne, which project is that on, the school's, uh, improvement project, track and field or asbestos?
It's actually on none of them, it's a new topic.
No new topics.
Well, let me get rid of the, let me get rid of the other items on the agenda first. I'm returning to Ro, uh, Roman numeral number seven, item number three, which is, uh, we tabled that during the meeting, this is change order one-seventy for the paved driveway to the storage shed.
Yep.
Uh, that came in at forty-five-thousand dollars with a bunch of exclusions of, yeah, so, uh, the, the issue here became one, as ONG explained it to me, 'cause I about had a, um, coronary when I saw that price, was that, um, they used the spec for the parking lots and driveways that we drive school buses over every day for this, was that the only spec they had?
Yep.
Um, and they got a response for that with, you know, a hundred-and-twenty-long tons of gravel and a bunch of other stuff, so, looking at the size of that, unless you move the sh, that storage shed from what I saw it last, that's just out of control, so, there's only, we have, we have two options here, um, uh, and I, I know you want that paved, understand why you need it paved, um, and he had indicated there's some turnarounds and stuff there, so, um, we gotta make sure we're, we really need those turnarounds there and everything like that, but, you can't just back down it, but I think the answer here might be, we might wanna get pricing on this outside of the project.
Yes, that's fine.
Add like this, we're probably not gonna get state reimbursement on this portion of it, so I'm thinking you could get that done for less than half that price, but we may have to go out and get three bids on it.
That's fine, I'll, I'll get that, I've got a guy going to do some, uh, patching pavement work at the high school. Uh, if I can roll that in with that, I'm, you know, as a group thing, I might be able to, you know, even though it's built separately, um, but if you can do the work at the same time together, I can probably get a better price also from him.
Well, keep in mind, we're gonna, based on the price of this, my estimate's gonna probably be about twenty grand, uh, we're gonna need to have three, uh, three bids.
Right, which is fine, that's not a problem, I'll get, I'll get three different quotes, but, uh...
If they all come out, if they all come out above forty-thousand dollars, then we'll, uh, then we'll, uh, look at maybe having, uh, these guys do it. Uh, but as far as the spec goes, uh, what's the heaviest thing you're gonna drive on a thing, a pickup truck?
A pickup truck, yeah, it doesn't need to be for buses and everything else like that, you know?
Yeah, residential driveway, uh, quality should be enough.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, uh, no problem there, what's the item you need to, uh, bring before the committee?
Last year, the town council approved redoing the two restrooms at the high school plus a series of classrooms. I guess in the past, you've authorized or turned it over to us to do, and then we report back to you with the final report. Um, we're moving forward on the two, the two additional restrooms and classrooms, um, and superintendent suggested that I request that you authorize us to proceed with the project and then report status on a regular basis or at completion.
What is the, uh, cost of the work?
The estimate for the restrooms is like a hundred-and-twenty-five, I believe, and the classrooms are one-fifty-seven, and that would be like ten classrooms.
And what are you doing in the classrooms on that?
The classrooms, we're painting, replacing the ceiling, replacing the, um, blinds, um, new smartboard, possible furniture depending on what the classroom use is, and if there, if it needs to be replaced, but it won't necessarily just be a bulk replacement in every classroom. And if we do, or we do replace it, we'll take anything that's good in that classroom and move it into other ones.
Alright, this, this sounds to me like, uh, uh, I'm gonna call it maintenance work, um, can you, can you prepare a, um, uh, overview of the project estimated costs and scope, um, so that we can formally have something to vote on to pass it to you rather than just your comments today?
Absolutely, not a problem.
Yeah, put that, and Lisa, let's get that on the agenda for two weeks from now, and then we can, uh, we'll be able to review that and vote on that.
Okay.
And, uh, for Kate, uh, for you, and I know that Bob's not online today, but, uh, that I presume has already gone through facilities, uh, with respect to board of ed, right?
There's something that we've been discussing.
Okay, um, I, the, now, has the, has the board of ed, where's this money coming out of, CNR?
I believe it's coming out of CNR, this was approved in last year's budget and was put off because of everything with the move and everything that was being done. So this technically was, is tar, was targeted for the two-thousand-nineteen-twenty budget, so that's why we're moving forward on it now.
Alright, we're still... Do you do the work over the summer, or when do you plan to do it?
We're planning that, if they tell us we're not going back, we're gonna start as soon as we know we're not going back, or on the sixteenth of June or nineteenth of June when we're done.
Alright, and, and Wayne, I don't know when you dialed it exactly, but we talked about the best tech work on the walls to remove the vermiculite at the middle school.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, at Gallup Hill School, we, um, I made it very, very clear to them that, um, I am almost to the point where I'm afraid to start that work before the end of a normal school year, 'cause if somebody decides to get the kids back in class for even a week,
Yeah.
Uh, with the problem we had in the middle school with that testing we did,
Yep.
I do not want to be the committee that, after the kids were out for two months at home, we try to bring them back for a week and we can't 'cause we had a bad asbestos test.
Yep, no, I agree with you, um, you know, unless they definitely say, hey, it's closed until September, you know, um, I, I agree, then we wait until our definite last day, which is June nineteenth.
Roger all, okay, alright, thanks, uh, anyone on the committee have anything else to, uh, bring up, uh, that we need to address tonight? Okay, hearing nothing, uh, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you.
Alright. Any, uh, all in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
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 Alright, we're adjourned, uh, see you guys in two weeks.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.